Certainly I'm going to exclude people because it's actually going to, you know, make sure that we're responding to the people who live here and who pay taxes here.
Well, I still feel that we've gotten along with our people all these years and we certainly were much more of a community than we seem to be now. So I just don't really see there's a necessity to get through all this rigmarole to, you know, and take away the right of people that have in the past spoken. And I question why you don't want people that have lived in this community all their lives to be able to say, to speak at town meetings?
Well, I think the reason is because as sworn officers of the town, our first duty and responsibility is to the residents and to the taxpayers. Certainly, this is nothing about enriching anyone's freedom to speak. Anyone can still write a letter to the editor. They can still contact the town administrator. They can still talk to the commissioners with concerns they have. And I encourage them to do that. This is simply saying that when we are acting as the corporate officers of the town of Rising Sun, we do that on behalf of the residents and taxpayers in this forum.
Well, I compliment everybody for coming and taking, participating in town meetings. This has been a long-term objective of mine, to get more input from the town's people and I, and the people in this surrounding community. And that's what we serve. We certainly want their business and we should listen to what they have to say.
Well, we, I present it tonight and we'll, we'll certainly, I plan to introduce it for a vote next week, or in two weeks at our next meeting. And I would love to hear from, from folks in the community. That's why I did the workshops. We didn't discuss it tonight and then maybe hear some feedback tomorrow.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If we don't act on it tonight, is that...
Right, right.
Okay. Next is ordinance 2012 dash six, no, 212, 12 dash 10, which, there's a copy over there. So, who's the motion for that?
That would be my resolution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I speak about this resolution, I just, before I read it, I'd like to say that I believe it is very important to keep our town economically healthy. And I think we need, as commissioners, we need to ensure that Rising Sun stays a vibrant and attractive place to live. I think what I'm getting ready to introduce here will help with that. With that said, I'm going to go ahead and read it. I'm going to skip the boilerplates. I'm going to go ahead and read it right now. It's Town of Rising Sun Resolution 2012 dash 12. Whereas the mayor and commissioners recognize that keeping the town of Rising Sun economically healthy and vibrant ensures the community as an attractive place to live and helps to avert poorly planned development while promoting and facilitating economic prosperity, business growth, and employment, opportunities for residents. And whereas the mayor and commissioners recognize that initiatives such as open space management, historical preservation, park and recreation, infrastructure, financing, economic development, and community revitalization are essential to the vitality and prosperity of the town of Rising Sun. And whereas the mayor and commissioners recognize that there are various programs designated, put forth by the state of Maryland, such as priority funding area, sustainable community, community legacy, designated community, distressed community, Main Street, and Elm Street, et cetera, that are designated to target and limit available, available state funding to communities that qualify for those program designations. And whereas the mayor and commissioners recognize that although the town previously took steps necessary to achieve these program designations, the necessary paperwork and background information was not complete. And as such, the town does not qualify for these funding streams. And whereas the common denominator of all these programs is the need for performance of an economic development and community revitalization study, which will identify and present a variety of background information critical to achieving program designations, such as zoning issues, proposed land use, market studies, demographics, transportation resources, community needs, economic factors, market designation, and community net. Now therefore be resolved that on behalf of the residents and businesses of the town of Rising Sun, the town administrator is hereby instructed to proceed with the issuance of an RFP for an economic development and community revitalization study, and to report back to the board with a recommendation for their selection. Now therefore be further resolved that the commissioners and the mayor of the town of Rising Sun passed approved and adopted this resolution on the 11th day of September 2012. I present the motion, sir.
The same rules apply to this, surprise reportments, or is it different rules?
I plan on voting on it tonight. I think that it is pretty well in here what it says. It says that it is, that he's going to come back to us after he looks at issues and RFP.
I believe that the town's people should have a chance to give their opinion on any legislation. So I believe it should be delayed the same as the norm.
Cal, do you want to speak more about what an RFP is and what we're trying to do here next? Well, Joanne has.
I have a question with an RFP.
Request for proposal.
Request for proposal. Okay. I mean, I'm sure they don't know any more than I do. Thank you.
Is the resolution legislation for state, resolution?
Your code requires ordinances unless they're from urgency to be introduced at one meeting and passed at the next. And it's specified ordinances because they carry the weight of law and they carry the weight of code.
But this is resolution.
But not resolutions. Resolutions can be passed at the same meeting, but they don't have...
Okay.
This is a workshop meeting and it should be reserved for workshop, in my opinion.
My motion.
I'll second your motion, Travis.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I was expecting discussion, but that's all right. Aye.
We can discuss if we're discussing beforehand, not afterwards. I mean, you've got to give me the consistent rules here.
Thank you, Travis.
Who voting aye or nay?
I voted aye, sir.
Motion passes three to zero.
Okay.
Okay. You know, I respect the mayor to try and make changes to the Rising Sun. That was my campaign platform. And it seems that all the changes are in trying to take away the power from me to do anything. And so, you know, I wish somebody would explain to me why these changes are necessary. I mean, I believe that there should be a rationale for anything. And I have yet, have never heard any rationale as to why people think it's necessary to transfer the power of the mayor to the town administrator. And the other thing is that I believe that we need to get through and make the changes to the benefit of the town's people. And we need to listen. We serve the town's people. They don't serve us. So I believe that we need to sit down and come to some conclusion, whatever that has to be. And I'm a very pragmatic person, but I need, think we need to suggest several things that we should do, and they just go off in the ether someplace. So I, I think it's time that we sit down and whatever our differences are, we settle those differences and get on with the town, making the changes in the town for the betterment of Rising Sun. Now, the staff reports. The town administrator, public works reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to deviate to some degree. And I think it's important for me to make this statement here right now, given the comments that were just made. Given the fact that at times my livelihood and personal safety are in question at times because of comments that are made, I need to also go on record and say that there has been no transfer of power to the town administrator when the ordinances in charge of it will pass. And I think that's very important to people to recognize that. And it gets a little hairy for me to not be able to verbally articulate that, especially some of the things that have been happening over the last month and a half affecting my livelihood, my future, and my family. So I just want to make that clear. Going forward, under town administration, Commissioner Osborne, we are still working on the general code, the updates to the codes. As you can imagine, there are a variety of ordinances and stuff that we are shipping off the general code to make sure that they incorporate into our documents. The ethics board, over the last couple of weeks, I just wanted to clarify that I serve as basically a staff secretary to the ethics board. So the paperwork that you see circulating around here, I take that direction from the ethics board. And I'm basically the staff secretary. So I wanted to let that be known. From a financial management standpoint, the accountant will probably give us an update regarding the status of our audit. Our audits are running much smoother and more efficiently than they used to in the past. So the accountant can go into that board, but they are going to be coming in shortly to finalize the audit. The other thing at the last meeting, there were some questions or comments posed at the meeting regarding the amount of money that is paid to the accountant. And as I said at the last meeting, that the expenses are as much lower and have been gradually tracking downward as we have shed all the investigations that have been going on in the town. They require the accountant to spend a tremendous amount of time researching, verifying, testifying, interviewing with various agencies regarding our financial stuff. So as of eight months, I think the last comment was the expenses are $150,000 to $190,000 a year. Over the first eight months of the year, the total to the accountant is $92,940. However, of that, $20,000 is not attributable to normal accounting. And the actual bookkeeping of the town is right around $72,000. So when you look at having a good qualified employee to do your accounting, and then your benefits and overhead that you're paying on top of that, instead of getting an employee that's just doing the bookkeeping, we have an entity that's providing, making sure that we are meeting all federal and state guidelines on reporting. And Commissioner Osborne, you're just now getting activated to that as you come to the meeting, to the reeds of paperwork and reports that have to be filed. We tell our accountant who is doing that. And then our accountant is also very instrumental in taking audits. It used to be filed late, issues on them, up to 50, 20 some odd findings on an audit letter of things that were not doing right. They're now streamlined and maybe one a year. That's the accountant that we're paying to do that. So that's all part of that $20,000. So again, over the eight months, it's $92,940, of which $20,000 of that is related to the other additional details that we're doing. So as I said at the last meeting, the expenses paid to the accountant are trending downward. Public works, there was a major water main leak on Mount Street today. The, our guys had a difficult time chasing that leak down. We're going to be following up the state highway because when the state did the Main Street program a couple of years ago, five, six, seven, eight years ago, they installed new water valves into our water system. There was some up, uplift being done. And apparently those valves are not working. And so our guys today, instead of having to just shut off Mount Street, had to shut off a much bigger area. So we apologize to any residents that saw some inconvenience in the water. Commissioner Osborne, it was on the agenda previous tonight that Mr. McGubbin wanted to come forward and talk about the dedication. I just got, I'm not sure if he emailed you, as I was coming over here, the punch list from the engineer. So I was going to give that to the attorney for, I think I gave this copy over, so that he can review so we can sit down and start a legal process of figuring out how and when we can take dedication on streets of local heights. We reported at the last meeting, Commissioner Osborne, that we were looking to get some prices, to do a joint venture with Armstrong Cable to deal with some stormwater issues on Cooper. Our engineer has met with Armstrong. However, they have not come back. Our engineer and their engineer have not come back yet with a formal game plan on how they're going to deal with it. So we're waiting for that before we can come back with a cost estimate. Mayor, I believe you had asked me to look into designating a white line painting on Reynolds because a resident there is sort of parking a little bit out into the street. I did look at that and I concur with your concerns about the issue there. So we've got to have a conversation with Ron about seeing what we could do to delineate that shoulder there to make sure that we don't have those vehicles parking out in the street. And also, Mayor, you had asked me to follow up on the utility pole on our Queen that was cut down. I have done that. I'm waiting to hear response from Delvaro for that. Under park and recreation, the buildings have been removed per se down at the park. Yatorro Watershed that we are working with is submitting plans to the county to secure the necessary, the necessary stormwater permits from the county so that they can go in and put the wetlands buffer area in. I will let the board know that we might want to talk to the county going forward about the fact that the restoration that we are doing benefits the county from the standpoint of they are required by law to reduce up to 20% of nutrient loading in all of the stormwater systems. And Triangle Park has one of those stormwater systems in it. And our Dog Park and what we're doing with the Yatorro Watershed is going to make modifications to that that are going to help the county get into compliance with that. Where as a normal course of business, they are charging us building public fees for that in plan review and inspection. So I might be talking to the board at a later date to maybe have a conversation to see if we can do something since the work that we are doing will directly benefit the county in the future. I said that buildings are removed to some degree is we were limited on how deep we could go with the buildings because the area was larger than 5,000 square feet. And although it was okay for us to take the buildings out of there, technically we couldn't disturb the ground underneath it more than 5,000 square feet. So when I say the buildings are out of there, if you do damage, you're going to see a right cutting of buildings on the ground. But that's the reason why we had to leave them because we couldn't remove them without disturbing that soil and running into an issue. Commissioner Marion and I, Commissioner Marion and I and Ron Thomas from our public works department, we walked that whole area with a measuring wheel because there are different features that our landscape architect needed to get exact measurement on. So anyone who saw us after that one day, I think it was one of the hottest days of the year to be out there. We picked up a lot of trash along the way, which, you know, our guys on a regular basis picked that trash up and they do try to stay ahead of it. But people appear to be tossing things out the window, you know, into the shoulder room. So we were picking up some trash. The other thing that I, I believe I spoke at the last meeting is we need to bring water to the park. And so we had asked the water engineer that everybody met at the last town meeting, Mr. Dave Stewart, to give us sort of a cursory idea of which way would be better to bring a new water line up, either Walnut Street or Mount Street. And the issue with Mount Street, for anyone who knows it, it's a much higher embankment. And so that would be an issue getting the water line down the embankment and below frost lines. But more importantly, the water line, we won't have to do anything with that water line until Yatorro Watershed is done with the restoration of the wetlands. And so if we were to bring the water line down on Mount Street, we're going to end up tearing up all that work that Yatorro is doing. So we are tentatively looking to bring a water line up Walnut Street, but it's not something we have to do now. That could be part of the extension of water supplies for the town. Under sewer and water, we met Commissioner Norton and I, the town attorney, met with CDM engineers to discuss some clarification and detail through some drawings. As you can imagine, on a very large project, things occur in the field and there needs to be some clarification on certain issues. So we had a meeting. They're basically cursory, you know, to some degree. And I expect us, you know, to have a couple more of those meetings in the future. Without going into a lot of detail, everybody has heard of the infamous Frappuccino lawsuit. Myself and some past elected officials were involved in some depositions today. That's all I know at this point. I'm not sure when the trial is exactly set for. So anybody who was trying to get a hold of me, that's why I was at, was in a deposition. Building planning and zoning, the next meeting of the planning and zoning board is September 24th. At this point, we do not have any cases before us, but as is typical, we have some rumbling jokes and cases before us. But at this point, we don't have any cases. And then the next board of zoning appeals is September 21st at 7:30 PM. And that is to hear the various requests from Clean Enterprises for the sun. On the code enforcement, I've done some inspections of the Halloween store. It's moving in at the old Martin's. It's always temporary through the Halloween season. But I was talking to the mayor about this, that, you know, we try to accommodate the temporary nature of these types of things. And this, this is consistent with what we tried to do in the past in terms of some of our smaller businesses with the bad economy are trying to take advantage of maybe floor spaces that they no longer need. And so in working with the planning and zoning board, we have found some ways to allow those businesses to maybe put in a smaller office of someone else that's not really going to have an impact on the community the way a business typically money under a planning and zoning code. So we've been trying to accommodate businesses without making them go through a lot of red tape. We've been doing that with the Halloween store at Martin's. But as I was coming to the mayor, I think next year, if there isn't a permanent tenant in there, we're going to need to talk to them about doing some more permanent renovations to the building because they're bordering on some life safety issues. It's taking a gunning building and then putting the Halloween store right in the middle of it. I have some concerns about certain things. So I pretty much warned them that this will be the last year that they're going to be able to operate that way. We have, we are making them put at least emergency lighting in now and some exit signs, but there's a lot more things that are going to need to be done in the future. The commissioners under, Commissioner Osborne and Norton might remember this, that I reported it to the previous board about four or five months ago about the houses being built up in Summer Hill. And the state law changed and now requires single-family homes to have a fire sprinkler system in them. And we were originally talking about how we wanted to handle that in our ordinance. And we still need to address that from the standpoint is that I have reservations about a single water service line coming in with a single shut-off. And when the, if the occupant does not pay the water bill and we come out to shut off that water, we're shutting off the fire sprinkler system. Now, with that said, we're not going to be the first community that's in that predicament. And there's, I just don't think it's a good business to have a single line like that. I don't, I don't want to see the town have to deal with the social stigmatism, even though legally we could do it. I don't want to see the town have to deal with the social stigmatism of having shutting a water service off, a fire occurs and, you know, that causes this issue. So I discussed it with the owner of the property and they agreed to put two water services. And actually, it's still one water service coming off the main, so they didn't have to dig in the street. But they're branching it out into two separate services with two separate water shut-offs. So that if somebody doesn't pay the water bill, we're shutting off the water, the drinking water and not the fire sprinklers. But it is something in our code that we need to address in the near future. And that's all I got.
Okay. The report that Townsend mentioned to you about town bills with Wagner and Associates is in the back of the July book that you have. So that each one of you have a copy of the report that's spoken. You're going to find that you have two books. One is June and one is July. And we'll start with the June book first. I added an extra little paper in there for all of you to read. I'm sure that Joanne does not want to be explained what a CPA is. But I thought it was important that all of you understood that there is a difference between the word bookkeeper, accountant, and CPA. And I am a CPA in three states. So I thought that was important for all of you to know. There is a lot more education. There is a test. And I worked hard for that title. And that's all I'm going to say about that. Let's turn to page three of the balance sheet for governmental funds. At the end of June 30th, 2012, this is our last month of the year because we are on a fiscal year, not a calendar year. We have $73,374.49 in cash. The MLVIP, which is our investment for the government fund, is $28,508.07. We have investments of $78,909. We have taxes and service charge receivables, which is basically trash and a few taxes that are left, of $51,214.28. We have due for the state of Maryland of $35,656.87. We have other receivables, which is basically permits and various other receivables of $11,635. You're going to see a new category called prepaid expense. And basically what that is, is we have to pay certain insurances, like our medical insurance, in, for July, we have to pay them in June so that the staff has their insurance. We don't mess around with the accruals from month to month, but at the end of June, I have to do all these extra journal entries to get us in compliance so that we can have audited financial statements. And basically that is insurance, $12,553.07. The same thing as you will have a lot higher accounts payable and accruals because, one, we are accruing one full payroll into June. And that's because you worked in June, but we didn't physically pay you till July. We also have certain bills that we receive, like legal bills and other various bills that we didn't actually get the number support in July, but are technically work that they did in June. So we have to put that into the accounts payable. And that's $52,380.37. And then we owe the, the proprietary fund owes the government fund $270.07. And basically what I tried to do is, I've been trying to work out the due-tos and due-froms for the two entities. So at the end of the year, we pretty well got most of it going. Four unrestricted funds of $239,229. One thing is, if you go to page four, which is the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance, we have basically $1,402,827.52 of total revenue. I did some math here and I wanted you all to know that of I did some math here, and I wanted you all to know that of the taxes, you'll see taxes real estate, taxes local property, and taxes other local, that our tax revenue is $1,524,25.11. So for the past 12 months, 75% of your revenue came from tax dollars. The next category, which is intergovernment, state, and intergovernment county, is $85,402.1 and $71,900.13 for $157,302.14. This is 11% of the total revenue, which means that's 86%. So basically, 86% of your revenue is coming from taxes, and we get some money from the state for our police. We have gotten some funding for new equipment for the police department, and that's what this number comes up to. Other grants and contributions is $25. We are not receiving a whole lot of money of grants, and when we do get a grant, we have a matching expenditure to grow with that grant. When I take you to the budget, you will see there is a $300,000 worth of grant money for parks and recreation, and we are spending that on parks and recreation. So we are not balancing the budget with our grant money, not when it was $25 for the year. Service charges, this is what we collected for trash, $172,404.83. Investment earnings, $4,841.86. And miscellaneous, these are fingerprinting, when we ran out of cards, various different things like that, $15,828.58. As you go down, and I'm not going to read all the expenditures, the expenditures was We had a loan proceed for one of the last vehicles that we purchased for $29,945.93. Change in fund balance for the year, 12 months, is $30,573.79. So we are closing the 12 months out in the last by $30,573.79. And I did a couple little other percentages. Of the $1,402,000 for the government fund, 33% of that, which is the largest category, is basically, 33% of it is the salary dollars and wages. If we go on through the budgets to the last page, page eight, we had budgeted that our total revenue would be $1,663,574.11. Our actual revenue was $1,402,827.52. The major change, I'm on eight if you're looking for it, big page pull out like that. The major difference was the fact that park and recreation, dog park, didn't happen this year. The expenses that we budgeted was $1,725,957.53. When we made this budget, we projected that we were going to be in the red by $62,383.42. And as I spoke before, we ended the year at $30,573.79. And the majority of the expenditures, of course, that we dropped had to do with parks and recreation. Any questions on the government fund?
I just have one question. Again, there's missing something here. Back on page three, you have total assets, $291,857.3. Liabilities, $52,650.44. And then total liability and fund balance is still $291,857.3.
What's your question?
Why, should those, why do those numbers match and they not match?
They do match. $291,857.3.
Right.
And then at the bottom, $291,857.3.
Right, but you don't think the liability's out of that, though? You don't?
That's the $239,200. You take $291,857.3, you subtract your liabilities of $52,650.44.
Right.
Comes up to $239,229.
Okay, thank you.
That's your reserves.
Right, right.
Okay. Any other questions? Let's go to the proprietary fund, which I'm looking for. Oh, here, the tab fell off. Page three, this is the proprietary fund. The cash at the end of the year was $146,225.14. The MLGIP was $1,1029.26. The sewer owes the water $79,706. The service charge receivable for water and sewer combined was $136,447.69. As you can see, there is also the prepaid, which is the same thing as I explained with the government fund. We had to pay some of the insurance in June for the month of July. That's $3,772.71. We have restricted cash and cash equivalent, and this is the money sitting in the sewer checking account, was the money that we borrowed from PNC, of $12,594,795.20. And in August, we gave $500,000 of that to the contractor. We have capital assets of $8,386,089.77, less the depreciation of $2,456,602.14. Due from the government is $19,132.11. Basically, the water owes the government, $19,132.11. And if you go down and you look at the liabilities, the sewer, the water has a receivable and the sewer has owes money, and they net to $270,000, if you're wondering where the difference is there. Accounts payable is $21,388.52. And then the due from water to sewer offsets the $79,706 that's above on the balance sheet. We have non-current liabilities, and the majority of that is the sewer loan, $14,374,916.96. We have investment and capital assets of $4,149,365.87 for unrestricted assets of $1,266,356.35. And if you go down the line, you'll see how those two balance each other, $19,910,595.74. At the end of the year, for the 12 months, total service charges was $828,953.32. And then we have the self-cow rental of $19,842.20 for a total revenue of $848,037.52. Our operating expenditures was $909,144.35 for a loss of $61,106.83. However, we did receive some governmental money of $20,978,000, and we have interest income of $30,193.7, interest expense of $12,158.4. So that adds another additional revenue of $39,993.2. Our change in net asset is negative $22,096.96. You put the government and the proprietary together, we still ended up in the positive about $9,000. If you add back the depreciation, which is a noncash item, we have a lot more funding there than what it looks like in the books. If we go back to page eight, budget to actual, we actually collected $9,212.52 more than we were expecting to the budget. We spent $5,186.78 less than what we were planning on to be in the profit of positive of operating income by $14,399.3. We were projecting that we would run in, now I'm not very good at this, that's something that everybody's been underdoing, has to do with the interest and everything. Any questions on the proprietary? Let's go to the July. Since we've all been here for a long time, I'm only going to highlight a few changes that we are doing. Looking at one month at the beginning of the year is not really going to tell you a whole lot. If you go to page four of your statement of revenue and expenditure and changes in fund balance, we are now taking the real estate taxes and we are allocating it, if you look at the very first line, so that if you looked at June, you would see all these negatives. If you looked at page four, you would see all these negative of fund balances at the end. What we're now doing is taking the real estate taxes and allocating it, the budgeted money all among all the funds, so that if we keep on budget, each of those funds, like the police department, which is the first after the general fund, will end up at zero, not in the negative. So if you see, there is $503,406.10 of the real estate taxes put in the police fund, and then you have 1/12 of the expenditures there for that year. And then you have planning zoning for $3,115.99. Does anybody have any questions with regard to that?
Thank you for that, Pam.
Oh, you're welcome. No problem. That's something we've been trying to get done. And I think as we go through the year, it will allow us to keep a better eye on the various different categories and what they're spending. And I think that's all I'm really going to address with July. Like I said, it's basically just one month. I will go over the proprietary a little bit, because the other thing you might notice with the government is you have all $800,000 of the real estate taxes put in the month of July. And that is because it doesn't come in nice increment amounts. We will, I believe it was in August, we got $402,000 of that in the month of August. So if you don't put the receivables on the books, it makes all the numbers go in the wrong direction. So we went ahead and just booked it at the beginning of June to have the whole amount. And that allows you to see how much is left in your individual categories. Go to the proprietary fund. The balance sheet hasn't changed that much. You will notice that the prepaid's and the accounts payables are reducing. If we look at page four, we will see that the revenue for the month of July was $80,365.31, and operating expenses was $65,941.78, for us to be in the positive for the water and sewer combined of $14,423.53. We have some interest income of $2,320.24. So we are starting off the water and sewer in the positive by $16,743.77. If we go a little bit farther back, you will see budget to actual, that were actually The actuals are higher than the budget, and we have saved on the expenses by $6,612.20. So we're actually doing better than the budget by $8,547.38. So I think we're off to a good start for the month of July. Behind the financial statements in the July book, you will see the check register for July and August of all the checks that we paid out for both the government and the proprietary. And then behind that is our bills for the first eight months. Any questions?
What are we paying Town Rising Sun for?
Is that a $10,000 check?
$39,765.
That was us closing out some bank accounts and moving them over to the governmental checking account. And you have to write the check to the Town Rising Sun and then deposit it into the checking account. There's also a $10,000 check, and that's for the HRA, because the HRA is in one bank account, and the regular operating account is in NBRS, and they have to be in separate checking accounts. Any other questions?
What are the, there are several checks here that are check numbers and dated the 13th of July that are all zero.
Those are the paychecks. They are direct deposited.
Oh, okay.
And to be honest, I, I mean, you could probably see it, but it would not be something we'd want to really. Because of privacy.
This is direct deposit, yeah.
Correct, mhm.
Well, why put zero in there? You had some amount that was taken out of the town's accounts.
They get reports on what is taken out in an aggregate for the payroll, because it's not an individual check technically. The system runs an individual check, it tracks their W-2 income, but it claims out as one large amount of the direct deposit. It goes to a third party that then distributes it out to all bank accounts.
Who does our payroll?
We do.
What are we doing?
Any other question?
Can I ask you that question?
If nobody has any more questions, I'll just sit down and stop reading boring numbers No, thank you, sir.
The police report.
Thank you, sir. During the month of August, this is Jim Pike, he's with the board, with an issue related to the fire company and the ability to navigate the center of town, North Queen Street, Pearl Street, where traffic normally stacks at that light and causes, it makes it almost impossible for a fire engine or ambulance to come into the intersection, make a left on the Pearl Street, and go on to their call. He requested that we take a look at that intersection, see if there's anything in traffic patterns that could be changed to help them get through that intersection. I did an assessment with the, I did an assessment of the intersection and met with him. I since provided that to Commissioner Berkowitz for the commissioners to review and see what we can do to help facilitate a smooth transition through that intersection. Also, the Governor's Office on Crown Control and Prevention has made the announcement that the State Aid for Police Protection Grant is now opening. I'll submit that within the next few weeks with, after I get some of the documentation from Mrs. Wagner's office. The, last September or so, the town received a grant to upgrade the police computer system and the software that holds the reports for the police officers. That complete transition is, that transition is complete. Tomorrow will be the first day that the system goes live. From this point on, all of the data that we put in will come out easier. The, the reports that I give you here during most meetings have to be hand researched from today on. We don't have to do that. The reports will be computer-generated. It will include pin maps and so forth. So it's a pretty significant step for the police department to not have to spend manpower and hours on researching these numbers for this. It'll come a whole lot easier. And the system has the capability to be linked with the online services that provide those numbers, so the public can view where crimes occur on almost a real-time basis. Lastly, the monthly and bi-weekly statistics are available. They'll be available in the police department. There are no significant trends that I have to report right now, but those, those numbers are available to the town. Thank you, sir.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can you elaborate on the TV monitors for the third floor?
As part of that upgrading of the police department computers... As part of that upgrade of the police department computers, it allotted us room to create command centers. There are, there's a small center on the second floor and a third floor. There's a larger one. And it's, during events like the hurricanes from last year or the snowstorms from a few years ago, it allows for the town to bring in the Department of Public Works Director, myself, the town administrator, the mayor, commissioners, have all of those people in place to make the important decisions for the town in one room. We can then monitor all the weather, the events occurring in other places. We have direct links to different agencies around the state via a system called CAPLAN. There's a lot that we can now do from the town's building and not have to go to Elton to be in the command center there. But what you see upstairs is the monitors that will be a part of that system. Any other questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Commissioners' report, Mr. Berkowitz is absent, so Commissioner Marry.
Okay. I'm going to keep my report a little short today because I'm actually suffering from a, well, Jay, were you going to say anything under your town attorney's report?
I have one, so.
Okay. No, you're good. I'll wait. You can go.
I apologize. I'm going to make mine real brief. You all recall at the last meeting, a gentleman by my name, Phil Smith, came on behalf of Brian's Grace Homeowners Association, and in his words, wanted some answers to some outstanding issues. I sent you a memo on August 30th saying I'd be glad to try to help you with that, but I need to know what the context was. I'm very familiar with Brian's Grace and very familiar with a lot of the issues that I'm not sure they're the same ones he was talking about. I know the mayor contacted my office today and said to bring my files about Brian's Grace. Primarily, I need to hear from you and talk to you about what it is you talked with the residents about, what it is you talked with the developer about, so that I can come up with a strategy. This isn't as simple and straightforward as you think, because we were threatened with a lawsuit from the developer and the last correspondence from them. So what I propose is that a meeting, and Mr. Smith asked you to respond to him within 30 days, so half the time's been, has been gone. And if you'd like to meet that deadline and you'd like me to assist you in doing that, I suggest right after this meeting, we have a closed session, and for legal, where I can tell you what I know, you tell me what you know, and we come up with a strategy of how to be able to get that accepted.
Okay. Commissioner Marry? My report's going to be a little short tonight. One thing I'm going to say is the millings at the dog park have been removed. I'm planning on having a conference call within the next couple of weeks with VNR and the Octoria Watershed to speak about our next step in the process of the dog park. As far as the website goes, some of the commissioners, including Mr. Norton, had his picture taken by Dave Mornick for the website, and the mayor and commissioners have about a week left to return their bios to me to be posted on the website. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner, on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I haven't pictured taking this one, except it's fancy tie on, so. I don't, also have a very long report tonight. The town administrator talked about the meeting we had last Tuesday about the water treatment plant that progress were making. That was a good meeting. I did want to let folks know.